Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,204th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to the City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Denaro is absent. Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Karen Magno is here. Chairman Wolschow.
Is here. Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. For those in our audience, the format of this meeting is we'll call each of the items that are on our agenda. There's two items of interest tonight. Our planning staff will give background information on the item. We'll then have the petitioner come forward and speak to us about their petition. We'll have some questions for them. And then there'll be an opportunity for anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the petition to come forward afterward, and we'll prompt you along when that time comes. Once we hear from everybody, then we'll make our decision on each item. With that, if our Secretary is ready, we're going to start with item number one on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2023-07-02-10, submitted by Technical Group Inc., requesting waiver use approval under Section 6.51 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to construct and operate a drive-through coffee shop, Scooter's Coffee, and convert the existing building on the property into an ice cream shop, Lickety Split, at 19100 Farmington Road, located on the southeast corner of Seven Mile Road and Farmington Roads in the northwest quarter of Section 10.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you. Again, this is a request to construct and operate a drive-through coffee shop, as well as convert an existing building that is located on the property into an ice cream parlor. And the property is at the southeast corner of Seven Mile and Farmington Roads. This is a zoning map showing you that the zoning of the property in question is C2, general business. This corner property was previously occupied by a gas station that was demolished sometime around 2010, and then in 2018, the site was enlarged by about three tenths of an acre, with surrounding land to the south and east that was split from the adjacent Animal Hospital property. The added property included a 12,000-square-foot building that sits in the southwest corner of the property, and this is the building that would be converted to the ice cream parlor. The site today is roughly 6.65 acres with 148 and 1/2 feet of frontage on Seven Mile Road, and then 190 feet of frontage on Farmington Road. Under Section 6.51, drive-through restaurants do require waiver use approval. The proposed Scooter's Coffee would provide a drive-through facilities and some outdoor seating, but no interior seating. The building would be positioned in the northeast corner of the site, with parking provided on the west half between the restaurant and Farmington Road. This would be a one-story building. It would be roughly 677 square feet in size. Two driveways would provide access to the site, one on Seven Mile Road and then another on Farmington Road. Floor plan submitted with the application shows the layout of the Scooter's Coffee. It includes a preparation area, as well as a single unisex restroom. The traffic lane serving the drive-up would commence on the south side of the building and then loop around to the pickup window, which is on the east side. There would be a menu board and an order kiosk that would be in the southeast corner, stacking for roughly four vehicles, and a bypass lane would be provided. Looking at the outside of the building, the exterior would consist mainly of brick and hardy panels, which is a composite siding. There would also be red canvas awnings above the windows and the doors. And the structure, as you can see here, would have a gently sloping shed-type roof with a maximum or an overall height of roughly 19 feet. Looking at the Lickety Split, the existing building is at the south end of the property. This would be renovated into the ice cream parlor. The building is about 1,197 square feet in size. The floor plan for this business shows a food preparation area, a single restroom, and a front interior dining area with 12 seats. There would be no drive-through facilities. Outdoor dining is shown on the west side of the building, but we do not have a seating plan. The existing building has a flat roof and is composed mostly of CMU and brick, and the brick and the block would be covered with the same brick and hardy siding that would be used for the Scooter's Restaurant. So the plan here is to make the two buildings appear consistent, so once completed, they would have very similar design features, including the red awnings above the doorways and the windows for the Lickety Split. The color renderings, as you can see here, show dark brown and brick, as well as a lighter brown or beige colored siding. Parking for the two businesses is based on the floor area, as well as the number of employees. The plans indicate that there would be four employees. The collective number of required parking spaces is 19 per the ordinance. This includes seven for the Scooters and 12 for the Lickety Split. The plan shows a total of 19 off-street parking spaces in compliance with the ordinance. Where the property abuts residential on the east side, the zoning ordinance requires screening. The plan presented shows a six-foot-high opaque privacy fence. The fence would run from the southeast corner of the property north for approximately 90 feet. One house would be affected with the screening, and that's 19025 Westmore. Currently, there is a wooden privacy fence located along the property line. If the opaque fence is to be constructed, the wooden privacy fence would have to be removed. You have a revised landscape plan before you this evening that shows landscaping throughout the site, including placement of trees and shrubs outside of the right-of-way along both Farmington and Seven Mile Roads. There's also a double dumpster enclosure that would be located in the southeast corner of the property. All stormwater management would be handled underground, and the lighting, as proposed, is shown at 20 feet in height, which complies with the zoning standards. Per signage, both buildings would be allowed two wall signs. The Scooter's shows two wall signs. They'd be allowed a total of 58 square feet. They're showing a 25-square-foot sign on the north side of the building and a 77-square-foot sign on the west side facing Farmington Road. Also shown are three six-square-foot blank sign panels on each side of the building. The elevation for the Lickety Split shows one wall sign at 11 square feet. So as it stands now, the Scooter's is showing excess signage that would have to be approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The site would be allowed a ground sign that is shown in the northwest corner. That sign would be limited to 30 square feet in area, and that is what is being shown. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we have a number of items of correspondence that I can read out.
Yes, please.
The first item is from our Engineering Division. It is dated August 17, and it reads, "The subject parcel is assigned the address of 19100 Farmington Road. Once drawings have been submitted for permits, the Engineering Department will assign additional addresses if needed. The legal description included with the submitted drawings appears to be correct and should be used in conjunction with this project should the waiver use be approved. Number three, the existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer, Water Main and Storm Sewer. The submitted drawings do not include any information regarding proposed services to the buildings, but we do not believe there will be any negative impacts to the systems with the proposed usages." Number four, the submitted drawings do not indicate any storm sewer information, but the proposed development will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. The developer will need to obtain storm sewer permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Service prior to construction. Number five, no construction or soil disturbance, including dumping of materials, should occur on the site until the owner obtains the appropriate permits. And six, any work within the Farmington Road or Seven Mile Road right-of-ways will require permitting through Wayne County. That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter dated August 21 from the Livonia Fire and Rescue indicating that they have no objections to the proposal. That letter is signed by Brian Cuckla, Fire Marshal for the city. Similar letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated August 22 and signed by Paul Walter, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Letter from the Inspection Department dated August 29 that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed, and the following is noted. Number one, the van accessible parking spaces are required to be 11 feet wide with a 5-foot hash space. The proposed accessible spaces are shown with only a 10-foot width. And two, any signage not conforming to the sign ordinance would require variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This department has no further objections to this petition." And that letter is signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. We have a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated August 3 and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. A letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer dated August 11 and signed by Linda Schill, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Letter from the Assessment Department that indicates, "The Department of Assessment reached out to the owner of the property, John Pastor, and he intends to split the parcel, so each building will have its own parcel number. Please direct any questions to the assessor's office." And that letter is signed by Kathy Siderlett, Residential Appraiser. Next, we have a letter, an email correspondence dated August 22 that reads, "Hello, I'm a Livonia resident, and I want to voice my support for the proposal to put Scooter's Coffee and Lickety Split on the corner of Farmington and Seven Mile. I think it would be a great addition to the neighborhood." And that email is from a Madeline Bacon, who does not give an address. And then another letter of support dated August 25 that reads, "I live near the corner of the proposed development and would love to see this built. It would be a great improvement to the area, and I support it." And that letter, that email is signed by Paige Grecian. And that is the extent of the correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
I don't know if this goes to Mark or to the petitioner, but do we know if there's been any environmental study or soils evaluation on this property?
I'm going to refer that to the owner of the property, if you don't mind.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we'll ask that question shortly. Any other questions for our planning staff? I don't see any other questions. I do want to apologize to anyone in our audience about the noise from the fans. The air conditioning in the room is not working, and we've been undergoing this fan ventilation for the last few weeks, so apologize for the noise. We'll try to do our best to make ourselves audible to you. Our petitioner is here, Mr. Pastor. Good evening.
What? No. Thank you. John Pastor from Pastor 4G's LLC, 34018 Beacon, Livonia, Michigan, 48150. Just want to thank you for taking the time to looking at this petition. At the last meeting, we were asked to do a couple different layouts, which we tried to do, and every layout that we did just really didn't work out. Actually, I was fortunate enough to meet Mark out on site this morning and hopefully came to the same conclusion that where it's at, it's probably the best. We did tie in the sidewalks, if you can see, from Seven Mile to the Scooter's, Scooter's to the ice cream place, ice cream place out to Farmington Road, to at least get compliance of the walkability of the area. Also putting some outdoor patios. I'm not sure how many, you know, Scooters, I don't know how many people are going to ever, you know, get a coffee and actually sit out there. So we did put a little area out there for a patio. They are putting a window in, hopefully that it gets approved by, you know, corporate. That is a quote no-no for some reason. I do know that it is in Plymouth, but they have to get each individual thing approved as it is. But we took that into, you know, consideration. The fence along the property line for the residential actually is on one foot on our property already. I did try to, I knocked on the door today, nobody answered, to try to see if they wanted to keep the fence. They wanted, you know, a different fence. The weird thing about that is it's only going to be part of the fence, because the 90 feet isn't their whole property, and it also goes to the east. The corner of the fence actually goes west and then, or north and then east. So behind the old, behind the barber shop and the old cupcake place.
Yeah, down the alleyway.
So the fence is all board-on-board fence, so it'd be kind of weird if we did an opaque fence and tied it in there, but we'll wait to see what you and/or if we can get ahold of the neighbor to see which way they prefer to go.
Okay.
And then just wanted to reiterate that it is the thin brick with the masonite or hardy board siding with that. Didn't show very, doesn't show up very well that it's all, where the brown is, that is the thin brick. And as for the soils, yes. We actually, when we bought the property originally, probably, I think it was in 2009, 2010, somewhere around there, we actually, before we bought it, it already was cleaned up. Speedway, or I think it was a Knights' gas station, which was owned by Speedway. Speedway had to clean it up. They took the tanks out and all that stuff. I actually did a BEA, not only on that site, but also the old, the property that I bought from the Allen Animal Hospital, just to protect and make sure that there was, that there was no environmental or bad ground and stuff. So we do have a clean slate and ready to go ahead.
Thanks.
And with that, I'll listen to any comments or questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Pastor.
And I'm sorry, we also do have the franchisee here of Scooter's here, Brian Bender, if he has any questions about the Scooter's.
And the ice cream shop, you are going to be the owner of initially, at least?
Well, over my wife's dead body, she might speak her own little bit. But yeah, our intent is to own and operate the ice cream shop.
Okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Pastor. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Any questions for our petitioner? Mr. Bonjero.
One other question. And I missed the study meeting last week, so the issue with parking for the barber shop, does that, how's this all come into play? It looks like, obviously, they're parking way into your property, but...
Yeah, I submitted a letter from, to the Planning Commission from Allen Animal Hospital that gave them verbal permission from when they had it to let him use it. I had talked to him. I said that he could use it for that time, but, you know, with development, it is our property and all that stuff, so I'm not sure, you know...
Where that's going to play, but that's between you and him.
Well, I'm sure that he is here this evening. I'm sure he's not happy, but then again, he's had the use of that property for free for a long time.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
John, I had a note here about that fence on Westmore, so you're saying that vinyl fence, if you put that up, that will only go 2/3 of that neighbor's property?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's the whole backyard, because when I was there today, the backyard, I think, is longer than 90 feet, so you're not going to get that whole backyard. And then up the west, or the east side of the prop, or the north side of the property going east, that's also board-on-board, the same fence that goes all the way out.
So what would be the plan there? It's pretty unsightly the way it sits. I'm sure you don't want to look at it from your side, the way it sits now.
Okay, now, I was going to leave it up to, I was going to talk to the neighbor, see what they wanted to do, as if, you know, actually, the fence itself is not in that bad of shape. I think it really just needs to be, for like, would have painted, reconditioned, but I think it surely would look really bad if we used the vinyl fence with that, you know, combination with that. It just wouldn't look right.
It's a tricky situation.
And again, you know, remember, it's on our property. I don't care that it's there, you know. You know, it's not affecting our site plan or anything of that nature, so...
And John, the property to the east, your drive-through, will that go right up to the property line where Alex's barber shop is at, or will it go a little bit more there?
No, there's actually, I think there's about a 5-foot buffer there before it hits the, so you have a 5-foot landscape buffer, then you have the emergency lane, then you have the drive-through lane, then you have the building.
Okay. And then I got a question from Mark, Mr. Chair. Mark, do we determine, is parking allowed in that alley? If cars were to park there facing, say, westbound, is there, is there any restriction to parking cars in that alley?
Not that I am aware of. I was there today, and I, it's not posted as far as no parking. If that was a, if that became an issue, but from public safety in terms of emergency access, then they would, they could possibly go in there and post it, but I don't know that, you know, whether or not that would be an issue. The alleyway is, I didn't measure it, but dimensionally, it's probably, you know, 14 to 17 feet wide. It's not a real wide area, so, you know, if a fire apparatus had to get back there, any parking along that alleyway could constrict movement of any large emergency vehicles.
Okay. All right, so as of right now, there is no, there's no restriction in the event of a fire, that everything, everything's on the table, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions? Mr. Long.
Thank you. Mr. Toramina, you said that the gas station was knocked down around 2010. To your recollection, have there been any other proposed uses for this parcel since then that have come in front of us? Or Mr. Pastor?
Yeah, I've owned it.
Yeah, so, fair enough.
Yeah, I've owned it since then. No, and we've been marketing it, again, for a long, long time. As some of you may know, I'm actually a builder of restaurants and stuff, and I tried my darnedest to get a restaurant there, but they're all too close in proximity, whether it be a Burger King, McDonald's, Kentucky Fried Chicken, Taco Bell and all that stuff. They're just, it was just too close to the other stores in town, so that's why it's taken so long to get even, the Scooter's actually talked to Bigby first. And they did not, they chose not to go out to our property.
And you mentioned, from the study session, we had, we had asked you to go back and look at different configurations on the parcel, and you said that you've done that. And one of the, one of the keys to locating it back where it's at was traffic direction, was it not?
Yeah, that's, it's the traffic with the, the drive-through and stuff, yeah. That's where the biggest problem is, is when we put it up towards that close, now you have a reverse drive-through, and it's cutting across everybody. And that's where the, then your walkability is actually more in danger of people because of that drive-through lane. People are going to be crossing over that all the way through.
And the way it's configured right now, you think that the sidewalk that's been proposed as well is in a pretty secure, pretty safe space? We're going to, not going to have a whole lot of traffic going across that?
A lot, a lot better than what it was. And again, it just wasn't shown before, and that now, especially with having a couple of the patios and all that stuff, again, you're just not walk, you know, walking. You can actually stand there for a while if you so choose. It's the best scenario of what we have with the property that we have to work with.
Yeah, we can't get everything we want on it, but...
Yeah, trust me, I would, I would have loved to have a Myers there, but for some reason, they don't think my property's big enough.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner? See any other questions? Mr. Toramina?
Just a point of clarification on the question about the width of the alley. The right-of-way for the alley is 20 feet, but the gravel portion appears to be probably 15 to 17 feet wide. I think there's a grass strip along the south edge of that driveway or the alleyway between that and the fence that Mr. Pastor was referring to, that runs along the north side of that abutting residential property.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Is there any other comments or questions from anyone on the Commission? If not, Mr. Pastor, we'll have you sit down for a moment, and we'll see if there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition. Feel free to come to our podium.
Thanks for hearing.
All right, good evening. We're just going to ask for your name and address for our record.
Okay, well, I own a little barber shop. It's 33315 West Seven Mile Road. Okay, I bought that building in 1980, and Livonia restricted me, which I can understand because of the parking. But at the time I bought it, there was parking in front, okay? But then the county took that from me, basically, so I have that, that's gone. And then I've been parking on the lot next to me. Now, I know Mr. Pastor said that I was given permission, I don't know who gave me that, because I've just been parking there, okay? And I've been keeping the lot up. I shovel the snow, I cut the grass. I, you know, I've been keeping the place, you know, nice. And if you, the way this building's going to be, that they're going to build, even if I, there's no way any customers could get out of my parking lot, because you'd have to back out down the alley. And I'd be, it's just going to kill me. You're going to take all my parking, not you folks personally, okay? But they're going to take all my parking, and I, they won't even be able to get out. And as to the pollution, when they were digging that out, I went over and talked to the headman that was digging it out, doing the remediation on the soil. And I asked him, I said, "How clean is this when you get done?" Because they had a big hole. He said, "This is considered clean enough." I says, "Well, what does that mean?" He says, "Well, that means that you can't cook food. You can reheat food, but you can't cook food." Okay, so I don't know who told Mr. Pastor that that was clean, because the man that I talked to back then, he said, "It's not clean. It's clean enough." Okay? And my property's probably all polluted from that, too, from that gas station, because the tanks were just leaking, they were leaking fuel like crazy. And, but the biggest problem I have is the parking. You know, if they paved the whole thing and paved my lots so my customers could turn out, that'd be wonderful. I mean, I have no problem with the coffee shop. I think my customers will love it, okay? Get a cup of coffee and what have you. But the only thing I'm worried about is where they're going to park. And, you know, people say, "Well, you could park down the street and that," but I don't think a lot of people down that street are going to like a bunch of cars parking down there in front of their, in front of their houses. And, you know, basically, if I don't have any parking, you're basically killing me. I mean, that's the end of me, because there's no way I'm going to, you can run a business without a parking. And there's no way they're going to get in and out of my, there's no way they can get in and out of my parking lot. Now, the only way I could say they could do it is if the ice cream, the coffee shop just paved everything, and then my customers would park against the wall, you know, go parked in the wall and just back out and leave. That would work. But that's about the only way I can figure that you can do it. Maybe I'm missing something, but that's it.
Understood. And your name was?
Oh, it's Alex, and the last name is Coach. I got coached at a baseball stadium. I spell it K-O-C-H.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That way we can make sure it's noted in our records. Thank you.
Okay, now, let me ask my wife, am I supposed to say anything else, Sally?
Got everything covered?
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
Actually, thank you, Mr. Coach. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition in our audience? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Mr. Pastor, is there anything else that you would like to add before we make our decision?
No.
You're all set?
If there's any other questions, I'm just here to answer.
Let's see, is there any other questions for our petitioner before we have a motion? I don't see any other questions. I think we're all set. In that case, I'll close the public hearing, and a motion is in order. For anyone wishing to make a motion, there is on our desk a updated motion with new dates on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'm going to offer an approving resolution at the request to construct and operate a drive-through coffee shop and convert the existing building on the property into an ice cream shop. And 19100 Farmington Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval, and following conditions. The site plan identified as Sheet C2 dated August 28, 2023, as revised, prepared by Technical Group Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the issue concerning splitting the property, as outlined in correspondence dated August 3, 2023, from the Department of Assessment, shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Assessment Department. That appropriate recordable legal instrumentation, such as a cross-access agreement that gives notice and outlines the terms of how properties would share parking and access, be supplied to the Inspection Department at the time a building permit is applied for. Number three, that the landscape plan identified as Sheet LS1 dated August 28, 2023, as revised, prepared by Technical Group Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four... Number four, that all disturbed lawn areas shall be sodded in lieu of hydro seating. Number five, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department, and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number six, that the maximum customer seating count for the ice cream parlor shall not exceed a total of nineteen interior seats. Number seven, that the building elevation plan for Scooter's Coffee identified as Sheet A two dated August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three, as revised, prepared by Technical Group Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number eight, that the building elevation plan for Lickety Split identified as Sheet A three dated August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three, as revised, prepared by Technical Group Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number nine, that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that shall be of a compatible character, material, and color to other exterior materials on the building. Number ten, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the buildings, and that, and the enclosure gates shall consist of opaque and durable steel or composite panels. Number eleven, that all pole-mounted light fixtures shall not exceed a height of twenty feet above grade and shall be shielded to minimize glare trespassing on adjacent properties and roadway. Number twelve, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number thirteen, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the buildings or around the windows. Number fourteen, that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Number fifteen, that the issue concerning emergency vehicle access, as outlined in the correspondence dated August tenth, two thousand twenty-three, from Livonia Fire and Rescue, shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Fire Department and Inspection Department. Number sixteen, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time of application for building permits. And number seventeen, per Section thirteen dot thirteen of the Livonia zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for one year from the date of approval by City Council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void after the one-year period.
Is there support for the motion? One more.
Let's support it.
We have support by Mr. Carey-Magnow. Uh, there is a motion on the floor to approve this, made by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Carey-Magnow. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Toramina?
One minor revision, and that is to correct the dimensions of the barrier-free spaces as recommended by the Inspection Department.
Is the maker okay with that?
Maker is okay with that.
Supporter's okay?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any other questions or comments on our motion to approve? If not, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Carey-Magnow votes aye. Mr. Bonjero?
No.
Mr. Ventura?
No.
Chair Willschaw, call it.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna vote no. Motion is denied. Um, is there another motion? Someone like to make? Mr. Ventura?
I make a denying resolution that the request to construct and operate a drive-through coffee shop and convert the existing building on the property into an ice cream shop at nineteen one hundred Farmington Road is hereby denied for the following reasons. Number one, that the use and location of the buildings are contrary to the goals and objectives of the future land use plan, section of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One Master Plan, Book Two of Four, Land Development, which among other things identifies the site as part of a mixed development center with specific design guidelines that strive to redevelop properties into a higher-density mixed-use cores of activity with engaging streetscapes comprised of varied storefronts and activities, including gathering spaces, buildings located close to streets to create a walkable pedestrian friendly environment, and with parking and other essential infrastructure hidden from, off the street. Number two, the petitioner has failed to affirmatively show that the project complies with all of the special waiver use standards for planned general developments as outlined in Section five point oh two of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, and the general waiver requirements and general standards of Section thirteen dot one three of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, including demonstrating that the location, size, and character of the development will be in harmony with an appropriately and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood. Number three, that the petitioner has failed to show that a drive-through restaurant is needed or appropriate in this area. And finally, that the petitioner has failed to comply with all of the concerns deemed necessary for the safety and welfare of the city and its residents.
Is there support for a denying motion?
Support.
By Mr. Bonjero. Again, is there any discussion on the motion to deny? Hearing no discussion. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Nay.
Carey-Magnow votes no. Chair Willschaw?
Votes aye. The motion to deny has been passed. Uh, the petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to the City Council. And now we move on to item number two.
Petition two zero two three dash zero seven dash zero two dash one one, submitted by the Manik and Smith Group, Inc., requesting waiver use approval under Section six point zero seven of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to demolish an existing restaurant, which is Burger King, and construct a new automated car wash facility, Clean Express Auto Wash, at three four eight three five Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Stark and Wayne Roads in the northwest quarter of Section thirty-three.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. Again, this is a request to construct a new car wash facility. That would be on Plymouth Road. This would be on the south side, just east of Wayne Road. This is the former Burger King restaurant. Uh, the zoning of the property is C two general business. Uh, the net land area of the property is one point two three acres. It has a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Plymouth Road by a depth of three hundred and fifty-five feet. Now, the parcel also has forty feet of frontage on Wayne Road, which provides secondary access to the rear of the property. Uh, the existing two thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot restaurant was developed in the early nineteen eighties. That would be demolished. The site has three driveways, two on Plymouth Road, one on Wayne Road. To the northwest and east, fronting along Plymouth Road are a variety of commercial uses, and then to the south, residential homes, zoned R U F. Uh, the proposed car wash would be in the same general location as the existing restaurant, which is along the east side of the property. Uh, the overall dimensions of the building would be thirty-one and a half feet by a hundred and twenty-three feet, for a total of roughly three thousand six hundred and seventy-seven square feet. The driveway locations would remain unchanged. The west driveway on Plymouth Road and the driveway on Wayne Road would both be designed to accommodate two-way traffic, and then the easterly driveway on Plymouth Road would be one-way, right turn only for vehicles exiting. There would be three service lanes, uh, providing access to the car wash. Uh, these would be on the south side of the building, where the facility's entrance would be located. All three lanes would provide stacking for vehicles. Each lane would have a pay station, which would be about fifty feet south of the car wash. Uh, these would include point-of-sales kiosks with digital menu boards and self-serve pay stations. There would also be non-illuminated overhead canopies above each one of the pay stations. Automated gates would control access to the car wash. And then beyond the pay stations, the service lanes taper to form a single lane with a seventeen-foot bypass lane that would be provided along the east side of the car wash. So just to familiarize yourself with the site plan, maybe difficult to see, but this is the car wash building. Again, in the same general location as the existing Burger King restaurant. Uh, the three service lanes that I referred to are located here on the side side of the building. Uh, this is where the pay kiosk would be located. As you can see, these lanes taper down right at the point of entry into the car wash, and this is the bypass lane, uh, shown on the east side of the building. Uh, parking is provided on the west half of the site, between the car wash and the neighboring Duncan Donuts Restaurant. As the ex, as customers exit of the car wash, they can either leave the site using the east driveway onto Plymouth Road, or they can remain on this property by turning left and then traversing along a certain drive aisle that loops back into the site. Uh, they can then go to one of the vacuum units, uh, within these parking spaces adjacent to the building, or they could continue south and exit the site onto, onto Wayne Road. Uh, auto wash establishments are required to have no fewer than twenty parking spaces. The site plan provided shows twenty-five spaces. Of these, twenty-one would be equipped with the self-serve vacuum stations. The building itself would include light and dark shades of a quick brick material, as well as horizontal fiber cement siding. Uh, the windows would be installed on both sides of the building. Overall height of the building is twenty-two point four feet. Uh, there is a dumpster shown on the, uh, at the south end of the parking lot. Uh, the enclosure walls would be seven feet four inches. All stormwater management would be detained underground. Uh, the landscaping plan submitted with the application shows three full-size trees, one ornamental tree, and then twenty-six shrubs along Plymouth Road. We'll note too, that the revised plans do show brick piers and fencing, um, similar to what the PRDA has stal, has installed along Plymouth Road. Uh, adjacent to the residential to the south, the zoning ordinance requires a six-foot-high masonry wall. There is an existing wall at this location, however, it is less than six feet in height and will need to be replaced. Uh, site lighting would be limited to a height of twenty feet. Uh, we also note that the photometric plan would have to be revised in order to comply with the standards of the ordinance. And then for signage, uh, they have made revisions, while they're allowed two wall signs at forty-six and a half square feet total, plus a ground sign. The plans are showing one wall sign totaling thirty square feet and one ground sign at thirty-two square feet. There might be a slight deviation on the ground sign or adjustment needed, but otherwise it's in compliance. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
We have a number of items from our departments. First, coming from the Engineering Division, that's dated August first, and it reads, "The existing parcel was currently served by public water main sanitary sewer, but there is no information on proposed alterations to the services, so we cannot comment on impacts to the existing system at, at this time. Should the service leads need to be revised, the owner will need to submit drawings to this department to determine if permits will be required. Most likely, the water service will need to be upgraded for the proposed use of the property, which may require work within the Plymouth Road right-of-way to access the existing main. The existing height, site has an existing storm system, but does not have detention as required with any new development. If the waiver use is approved, detailed site plans should be submitted to this department to determine what improvements to the existing system will be required. It should be noted that any work within the Plymouth Road right-of-way will require the owner to obtain permits from the Michigan Department of Transportation." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter coming from the Department of Fire, uh, Fire Prevention Division, dated August tenth. That reads, "We have no objections to this proposal. Access for emergency vehicles shall be provided with not less than twenty feet of one obstructed width and have a minimum of thirteen feet, six inches of vertical clearance. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Cookla, Fire Marshal. We have a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police, dated August second, and signed by Sergeant Paul Walters. Uh, next is a letter from the Inspection Department, dated August twenty-ninth, that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. Number one, a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals would be required for the excess signage. Number two, parking spaces shall be ten feet wide by twenty feet deep and double striped. Three, the dumpster enclosure must be constructed of the same or compatible material and colors as the principal building in terms of texture and quality. The walls of the enclosure shall be a minimum of six feet in height or one foot above the dumpster, whichever is greater. The enclosure gates shall be of a solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass, and when not in use, closed at all times. And four, the van accessible barrier-free parking space shall be sized, signed, and marked in accordance with the Michigan Barrier Free Code. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter from the Department of Finance, indicating that there are unpaid water and sewer charges totaling two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. However, uh, those monies, as we understand it, have been paid, uh, except for a penalty fee that is still outstanding. And then lastly, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasure, dated August eleventh, and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions for our planning staff. Our petitioner is here. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name's Jake Arlett from Manik and Smith Group.
Thank you. And what would you like to tell us about your petition?
I mean, quite a bit of it was actually covered already, but, uh, basically, the main objective for the site was to maintain the existing traffic flow throughout, keep the building in the same place, keep the, uh, the three accesses functioning as they already do. Um, we made an effort to match the curb lines as much as possible, uh, the existing curb lines, but if any revisions are necessary for landscaping, it is possible. In terms of noise or water concerns, we've had several of these sites throughout the Midwest with no impact on water pressure in the area. That's due to the water reclamation system that reuses almost all the water used on each wash. So there'll be no effect on neighboring water pressure for any residents in the area. Um, the noise is, we have a noise study that we submitted that shows that within thirty feet, the, of the building and vacuum correlators, the noise is down to within thirty-five to forty decibels, which is lower than the existing streetscape or street noise. And the closest one to any residential property is already well over a hundred feet away, let alone the thirty feet from our study. So there shouldn't be any noise issue prevented. In terms of the utility connections, that's definitely something we can look into once we get into the engineering review, if waiver use is to be approved. And we'll make an effort to, you know, comply with any ordinances or requirements on that. Uh, as of now, though, we were making an effort to avoid doing anything in the M dot right-of-way, so that has not been focused at this point.
All right. Well, thank you for your presentation. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Any planning commissioners with questions for our petitioner? Mr. Long and then Mr. Ventura.
Thank you. Twenty-one vacuums, is that a standard number? I mean, that seems like a lot of vacuums to me.
Uh, the focus in general is to get as many as we possibly can. Uh, if we're required to have the twenty sites parking spaces anyway, they may as well be vacuum spaces as well.
The, y, you said you had a sound study done, um, and that the closest vacuum to residential is a hundred feet away.
Yes.
But did they consider all twenty-one vacuums running at once?
The vacuums themselves do not make any noise. It's only the vacuum correlators, which there are three of them on the site. So that's located as far as possible away from the residential.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Arlett, um, at our study session, uh, the observation was made that your bypass lane really doesn't function as a bypass lane. And it was, uh, suggested that the pay stations be moved west so that the bypass lane could come into the driveway prior to the pay stations. Is there a reason that that didn't happen?
Yes, so the, the, these are not completely self-serve, uh, pay lanes. They are, there will always be an employee on-site at the pay lanes to let someone through if need be, but it is the express wash standard to have the bypass lane. It's more of an emergency bailout lane after the, uh, pay stations.
So each one of these lanes is manned full-time, the whole time you're open?
At least one employee will be out at the lanes.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent of the time.
During operational hours, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So if somebody gets there and wants to bypass, you just wave them through?
Dennis Miller's here from Express Wash.
This is Dennis Miller.
This is Dennis Miller, 2600 West Vic Beaver Suite 410, Troy, Michigan. I'm consultant for the car wash. And it's similar to what we, we did at Farmington Road. We had a site that's approved there, too, last November, December. So similar, similar layout as, as that with the, with the bypass lane and such. So we always have people outside. We have at least one person dedicated to the vacuums and the, and the site itself to make sure there's no issues, cleanup and that type of thing. So if there's issues with the kiosk or somebody's having trouble, you know, we can, we can do what we need to do to get them getting care of.
So are you saying there's only one person on the site and they're all over the place? Or there's one person on the site dedicated to these pay lanes?
To the pay lanes, one, one person. We have two other people. We have an indoor kind of little office inside where we have some cleaning supplies and such for people to come in and buy. So we have three, usually around three people. Busier times, we may have five or six, depending on, you know, the traffic flow and what's going on with the site, so. But there is one person dedicated to the outside.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Ventura, and thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions from any of the commissioners. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? You feel free to come forward, ma'am.
Good evening.
Just ask for your name and address, please.
My name is Dorothy Mitchell, and that's my husband, Charles, in the audience.
Thank you.
And our address is 34907 Elmira Street.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. What would you like to let us know?
Our concern is getting in and out of our driveway, mostly getting out of the driveway to access Plymouth Road. It's, I, I have my little, my little drawing here, but that is mo- that's mostly our, because even with the current traffic, it's sometimes, at certain times a day, it's hard getting out of our driveway. When our young adults still lived at the home, we instructed them, right after we moved over there, not to get stressed if they had a problem getting out of the driveway certain times a day. So what we told them to do, and which is what we do sometime, due to traffic, we may make a right turn out of our driveway onto Wayne Road, go over to the next street, which is Parkdale, and go down to, I just had a brain, but anyway, go down to the next street and make a right turn, come back to Plymouth, and then go on our way. I thought I was prepared for this, but once I got here, I'm like, oh, I guess I'm not.
You're doing fine.
So that's, that's, that's our primary, our primary concern. And then now, after seeing the, the visual, it looks like it's, it's more, it's more of a, a car wash than we expected. And I think, does that conclude? Okay.
All right. I thank you for your coming up and letting us know your concerns.
I hope, I hope, I, I hope my, I hope it was clear.
Oh, you were, definitely. We, we understand that your, your concern is a traffic concern about the traffic on Wayne Road and across from Elmira, so we, I think we got that. And we'll take that into consideration as we go forward here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Is there anyone else in our audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Again, I'll go to the petitioner and see if there's any comments that our petitioner would like to make. Sir, would you like to make any additional comments before we make our decision?
I don't believe so, no. No additional comments at this point, thank you.
Okay, let me see if there's any other questions from any of our commissioners. Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Ms. Mitchell's concern about the, I guess, the appearance of the car wash, Mr. Tormina, could you bring up the rendering again of the?
Which rendering? I'm sorry?
The, kind of like the sky view of it that showed all the, the green color and, so in that, the vacuums are, are green and they're bright and they're loud. However, at the study session, I believe it was discussed that this is just a rendering and the actual vacuums for this site are planned to be more of a neutral color, is that correct?
Yes, this is default rendering that they provide for all the sites. They also come in a gray or black. I believe gray is the planned color for this site.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, good that we have that on record. Any other questions from any of our commissioners before we make our decision?
I do also have samples of the quick brick materials and building materials, if anyone would like to see those at some point.
Oh, do you have a, like a sample board that you could show us?
Yep.
Why not? Now our trusty camera crew can get that. That's fine. You can, you can just rest them there.
Okay.
They'll, they'll pick it up.
So those are some of the quick brick materials that'll be used on the building facade. And then I also have, this is an imitation wood that would be used as well on the exterior of the building.
You can just set that along the, with the brick there, yeah? Thank you.
And then the materials used on the dumpster enclosure would be set to match the building as well.
Okay, so the darker color that we're looking at on, which is on the right for me, is the lower portion of the building and then the lighter color's the upper portion?
Yep, and there'll be panel board as well.
Okay. All right, excellent. Is there any questions or comments from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Caremagnos.
What, we've talked a lot about the building. What is the, what are the hours, days? What, what can you tell us about that?
So weekdays and Saturdays would be 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sundays, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The, the vacuums shut off at 8, but they're on until the customers using them leave, so they automatic shut off at 8:30. The lighting will be all off by 10:30. And there's generally no loitering issues with a, a car wash site like this.
How many, how many cars do you expect to travel through here on a, on a given day? And then I'm sure the weekends are more, but what, what kind of traffic do you envision
So 100% efficiency, there can be a car every 36 seconds or 100 vehicles an hour. 98 percentile queue length is only eight cars, and we can have stacking space drop to 28, so there's not going to be any issue backing out and blocking the actual traffic through the road. That just doesn't happen. As far as total volume, Dennis might be able to speak to that slightly better than I can, but 100 vehicles an hour is, is basically the overall volume that we can service.
So that, that's what you, that's what you can service? Is, is that typically what a car wash of this size will service, or is it more or less? I mean, that's obviously optimal, what you're looking for there.
Yeah. We'll let Dennis talk to you about that.
Well, the 100 is on, on a snowy day or a sunny day in the wintertime when everyone's getting their car washed type thing. We could, we can, we have capacity to do 100, but that doesn't happen very often, maybe a couple of times a year. So it's more into, you know, the 30, 40 cars type thing an hour, you know, on the day. And the stacking, like you said, the stacking, we got all kinds of stacking. Usually it's six to eight car stacking on, on a typical day. And, but a really, really busy day, we, here we have the opportunity to stack a lot more cars, but as it gets busier, the, our people know it's getting busier, too, and they, and they get outside and direct the traffic to make sure there's not issues on the, on Wayne Road or Plymouth Road, to make sure that, you know, people get in and out and there's not problems with the interior of the site.
Yeah, I think my question was more in line with, you know, how much more traffic is this going to add to the area, based on the lady's question earlier, getting out of her driveway? Is it going to be much more dramatic than what the Burger King was?
No, not, not at all. We, we, yeah, we, we, we feed off the traffic that's there. There's a lot of traffic there, obviously, on, on Wayne and, and Plymouth Road, but we, it's more, more local neighborhood traffic, too, so we, we don't bring people in from miles and miles away unless someone's working down the street or something on their way out and that type of thing. So it's more of a neighborhood-type destination for everybody, so we feed off the traffic that's there.
We would expect a decrease in trip volume compared to a Burger King.
Okay, and I see you, I see you, you added to that driveway to, in front of the car wash, kind of squared that up a little bit to get out, make it, make it a cleaner exit once you come out of the car wash?
Yes, the existing geometry of the exit lane aligned more with our bypass lane than the actual exit of the building itself, so we did, that was one of the only areas where we deviated from the existing pavement layout, was to make a more fluid transition from the building exit to the exit lane on the northeast corner of the property there, yeah.
Yeah, good, thank you.
All right, any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Tormina.
I believe you had a note indicating that you would install signage to restrict the, the traffic movement in the two Plymouth Road driveways. What, what was your plan there?
Restricting left turns out of the Plymouth Road?
Oh, yeah. So at first, we were, because this is, the exit lane in the northeast corner is technically far enough away from the intersection where if we wanted to try to include a left turn lane, it would have been allowable by the, legally, but based on the geometry of Plymouth Road itself with the two left turns there and the existing geometry of the driveway, in order to not interfere with the MDOT right-of-way at this point, we decided to restrict it to right turn only.
So just so that everyone is clear, you're talking about which driveway restricting?
The northeast corner, basically the one that would come straight out from the, the car wash itself.
So there would be no left turns from either of the two driveways on Plymouth Road?
Yes, that would be true.
Thank you.
Okay, and that would be accomplished through a sign?
Yes, we have a, a sign shown on the site plan as well as the paint marking sign on the pavement itself.
Okay, okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Just a, just a couple of quick questions. The, your business model, is it a primarily a subscription-based car wash service, or are we looking at pay per use?
You can do both.
You can do both?
You can do both, but we try to do the monthly use if we can, but, you know, I think it's $7 to, you know, do a single wash if you want to do that, and you add wax to it and use a, a scale type thing. We don't have any open in, in Southeast Detroit yet, so we're looking forward to a lot of, a lot of locations next year. Closest one's in Toledo. We have seven in Toledo.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're out of Columbus. Our headquarters are out of Columbus, and we're in five different states, and I think we just hit 90 car washes, all operated by the company, no franchisees, so it's all company-run, you know, district managers and regional managers and that type of thing. So it's real consistent operations, too.
That was actually going to be my next question, was this a franchise operation?
Yes, all company, yeah.
Okay, so it's corporate-owned?
Yep.
And there is a, there's not a lot of space between the, the pay stations and the actual entrance to the car wash? I assume that, is there some sort of queuing process that happens at the gate where the gate doesn't open until there's room for the car to move forward, or how does that work if you get backed up?
Yeah, the gates are intended to stagger the cars into the actual funnel toward the building itself, and the, the space there is meant to maximize the amount of stacking spaces that we do have, just in case of a high peak volume, just to make sure that that doesn't back up and restrict, because we don't allow left turns out of there, we want to make sure that cars are able to get to that Wayne Road exit if they do want to go left onto Plymouth. So we wanted to make sure as much as possible that there's not going to be any chance of cars backing up and blocking that turnout.
Okay, and normally when I've seen these tunnel-type car washes, there's a person that stands at the entrance to the car wash that kind of guides cars onto the rails and so on. Is that, are you going to have a person doing that as well, or is that like a conveyor belt type thing?
Well, it, it depends on, on how busy it is, but we do, you know, we have three people, so there's one person probably in the office and one person outside, and the other person's kind of flowing around and making sure that everything's running smooth, so if there's issues, you know, we got people that are ready to, to act if something goes wrong or someone's having trouble getting on the right conveyor system and that type of thing, so.
So people pretty much do it themselves there?
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much.
Interesting, okay. All right, I think that covers my questions. I think there's a couple more here. Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing stood out, Mr. Arlett, you said in response to Mr. Caremagnos' question about hours, that, that they would shut down at 8 o'clock Monday through Saturday, however, the lights would remain on until 10:30. Is there a reason why the lights have to stay on that much after closing time?
That's just the standard for the Express Wash system?
Yeah, I mean, we could, depending on the area, you know, we could, we could turn them off a little if we had to. Once we're closed, we're closed. I think we have wall packs that we keep on all night long, just to kind of, for security reasons, but, I mean, the lighting is, after 8:30, I think that's probably more of a, like a summertime thing, you know, it doesn't get dark till 10:30, so we probably put that outside time of when, when they go off, so.
Okay, I, you know, I just, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to have them on when you're, when you're not open. Not for you, not for the city, not for the neighbors, not for anybody, and, and yeah, during the summer, it's not going to matter anyway.
We could adjust that.
I, I, yeah, I would suggest a suggestion, a, a, a change to that. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Long. Was there any other questions from any commissioners? Mr. Ventura?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Arlett, many of the car washes of this type that I'm familiar with have people standing outside the exit where the cars come out, and they hand-dry the cars. Is that something that happens here?
No.
Nope.
We have, our, our drying systems are really, really nice, so they, and they have this, we have the shammy kind of system, too, besides the, the blowers that go, we have shammys to do the cars, and it's pretty good when they're out, when they get out of there, so we don't, we don't do the full-service drying afterwards, and we don't do the interior, you know, cleaning, you know, like I said, it's express, they leave it, you know, that's it. Besides, people, a lot of times, people will go to the Vax after they get their car washed, they'll go to the Vax and, and, you know, use the vacuum cleaners, and they're free, of course. So we like to have, usually our typical, we like to have 20 Vax if we can, just for our customers, and it's surprising how many people like to use the Vax, you know, once they.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions? We've exhausted all our questions. I think we are now in a point where we can have a motion.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Ms. Mitchell, do you want to come forward? That way we can hear you over those fans. Yes, Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. My husband was just questioning, like, well, you had a conversation about this, but my husband was questioning, wanted to confirm the entrance and the exit to the car wash, because sometime we, we couldn't, couldn't hear.
Oh, yes.
And then this brought up another thought. Our neighbors across the street from us, we didn't, we didn't talk to them, we don't know if they received the information or not, because directly across the street from us on Wayne Road, you know, to see if they received the notices, because I think that they would be affected more than we would be.
Right, right.
And that's, that's all I.
Yeah, there's, there's a, I think it's a five, is it 500-foot radius, Mr. Tormina, of notification?
300 feet.
300 feet. So anyone within 300-feet radius of the property would receive a notification?
Okay.
So, so the people that are immediately south of the property, I'm sure, would have been notified, your neighbors in that area. In fact, this yellow, the yellow highlighted properties on this map are the ones that were notified based on that radius, so. So it hits a pretty good range of people there that are around the property. As, as far as the drives go, the, the discussion was about restricting left turns out of the two drives that go to Plymouth Road, because of the fact that there's the double left-turn lane right there to go onto Wayne. So the petitioner is going to indicate right turn only for those two north drives exiting to Plymouth Road. That was, that was the discussion there.
Okay.
So does that answer your questions?
Yes, it does.
Very good. Your husband's behind you, he's, he's gonna...
I got a question. Is the entrance on Wayne Road, North Wayne Road, just the side of Plymouth, and actually going to be on Plymouth?
There's going to be two exits on Plymouth Road, and then there's going to be the exit on Wayne Road as well.
Okay, I can, I can, I can show him on the, on the diagram.
Yes.
That we have here.
Yeah, basically, none of, none of the exits or the, the curb cuts, if you will, from the existing property are going to change. They're all going to remain the way they are currently.
Okay.
So there's the one on Wayne Road and two on Plymouth.
Okay. Okay. I'll show it to him.
Okay.
On the diagram.
You have the, the map there? Okay.
I'll show it to you when we sit down. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. If there's no other questions from any of our commissioners, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. The request to construct a new automated auto wash facility at 34835 Plymouth Road is approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. One, the site plan identified as C200 dated August 21, 2023, prepared by Manic Smith Group, is approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, the hours of operation shall be limited to the following: Monday through Saturday from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The landscape plan identified as L100 and landscape notes and details identified as L101, both dated August 21, 2023, prepared by Manic Smith Group, are approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, the Plymouth Road Development Authority, or PRDA, streetscape improvements, i.e., brick piers and fencing, shall be installed along Plymouth Road to the satisfaction of the Planning Director. Number five, all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights of way, shall be sodded instead of hydroseating. Number six, underground sprinklers shall be installed for all landscaped and sodded areas. All planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number seven, the exterior elevations plan identified as A2-1 dated May 17, 2023, prepared by SBA Studios, is approved and shall be adhered to. Number eight, all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening consisting of material compatible in color with other exterior materials on the building. Number nine, the three walls of the trash dumpster shell, area shall be constructed out of building materials that complement the building, and the enclosure gates will consist of opaque and durable steel or composite panels. Number 10, all light fixtures shall not exceed a height of 20 feet and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize straight light trespassing across property lines and glaring onto adjacent roadways. All exterior lights shall be turned off or dimmed between 8:30 PM and 7:30 AM. Number 11, the Inspection Department shall review the existing masonry wall along the south property line and, if needed, be brought up to the zoning ordinance's current specifications. Number 12, only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number 13, no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number 14, unless approved by the Inspection Department, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Number 15, the plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department, the building permit application, and 16 per Section 13.13 of Livonia Zoning Ordinance, this approval is valid for one year from date of approval by the City Council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void after one year, period.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Is there any discussion on a motion to approve? Mr. Long, is there any modifications that you would like to make in regards to the lighting? Or are you satisfied with?
No. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the actual resolution did have it in there for them to be turned off or dimmed between 8:30 and 7:30 AM, 8:30 PM and 7:30 AM. So I'm fine with that.
Okay. Very good. If there's no other comments or questions on a motion to approve, I don't see any questions or comments. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Caremagnos votes aye. Chairman Wolschop votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council with an approving recommendation. We wish you luck on your project.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing section of the agenda. There's one item left, which is approval of minutes.
And that is the approval of the minutes of the 1,203rd public hearing, a regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on August 15, 2023.
All members of the commission were present with the exception of Mr. Bonjero. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.